I actually have two adjustments to the agenda, one addition and one donation. I'm moving on action item 10.1, which is the evaluation of superintendent to the junior board meeting, because not everyone who is primary on that committee work is able to be with us here tonight. But I'd also like to add an action item, which will become the new action item 10.1, which is a need for us to take a vote on a graduation date on the existing 2024-25 school year calendar, because the graduation date is not correctly represented on that calendar. So we need to make a revision to that calendar to correct that. Moving along then, minutes, approval minutes of April 9th for meeting first. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any revisions, corrections, or adjustments? All those in favor?
Deb Blatt approved.
I'm always looking at Deb.
Wow.
No, Emily, we hit a milestone, yeah. Also, I mean-
Oh, you should take that as a badge of honor.
I always eyeball Deb, waiting for it.
I also need approval. Minutes of that meeting. So who?
Yep.
Okay, do you have a second? Any, there were really is something on that to amend, so all those in favor? Okay, great. Moving along then to public comment.
I don't have anything in Google Meet Live.
And no one on Zoom?
We have two folks, Kayla and Kelly Price.
And so we have-
Kayla Alexander and Kelly Price on Zoom.
And do they have public comment?
No.
Okay. So then moving along to the next item, number six, a presentation by Kelsey Orestis about student achievement. Thank you, Kelsey.
So, okay, I stand here. And Mr. Russell, there's a couple live links that I'll just, I'll show, I'll direct you to.
Okay, yep.
So we had a really exciting student achievement that I wanted to share with everybody. And some of you may have seen it, it was on the school webpage and on the Facebook page. But every year I do a junior scholastic competition called Where's Mat Man? And since I've started this, I would say I've been doing this for maybe 11 or 12 years. We actually had seven kids from our school place in the top 25 nationwide, which says a lot about our art program, you know, our elementary program teaching research skills, our middle school supporting these kids. This contest typically has anywhere, this year there were 1,500 submissions, and I just gave up to 5,000 submissions. So our school's always done a really good job, and I was really hoping this year for our Mat Man winner, who somebody we know who is Sylvie, we want to break the door. So I just wanted to walk you through some of the process and some of Sylvie's work. So about December every year, Junior Scholastic Magazine does this contest, Where's Mat Man? And this is just a screenshot from the contest this year. Sean, if you click on the Mat Man contest, it will tell you a little bit about what the contest is. I'll just guide you through the page. So if you click it there, can you find Mat Man? This is Junior Scholastic's cartographer, Jim McMahon. And he's the one who does this contest every year, and there's a little video about it.
Just a moment, Kels.
I didn't, I didn't give you a heads up on the video, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no problem. Can you turn the up on the app, the Pro米Kian? There's like a little speaker.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you, Kels. Yeah. Slow Bob away.
It's still quieter than Tomball.
So that's just a little bit about the contest. So there's a mystery location every year, and students find the location. You're answering some geography questions, and then they research the place. So the criteria that is used for the maps is creativity, originality, and cartographic clarity. So the maps really typically, they're not only just about the cartography of a place, but the culture, the history, the language. So we spend in the class about a week doing all of the research, getting ready, and doing rough drafts of our maps, and then the kids get to work. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Sean. So Sylvie, in sixth grade, did this map. So Yellowstone, this was COVID, so it's funny, he always travels internationally. This year he went to Yellowstone National Art. And as a sixth grader, Sylvie did this map, which was pretty amazing. And she made it into the top 25, and I think there were about 3,000 contestants that year that made it to the top 25. A ton of independent research, so she, and something that Sylvie does on all of the maps is she always tries to show it from a different perspective. So she here has a quote from, as Native American, from the Crow tribe, a Blackfoot leader, and here the Manic Peoples' Trail. So a lot of people did their maps in Yellowstone and put the map, the driving route around Yellowstone. Well, Sylvie did the Indigenous Peoples' Walking Trail that had been there prior. So I love that she looks at it from a different angle and really does the research. She has the Obsidian Arrow, that's another sacred place, the Sheep Eater Cliffs of the Native People that were there, some of the flora and fauna, and I thought this was really cool. So this painting was by Thomas Moran, and he did this painting here of this area, and that's what inspired Cuddy Roosevelt to actually make this a national art. And we had watched a video on this, and Sylvie was really taken by that and recreated the painting. So she really puts a ton of work into her maps. So as a sixth grader, Sylvie did that one, made it into the top 25. Sean, Mr. Russell, excuse me. Last year was Barbados. Again, Sylvie made it into the top 25. And in this map, she really did a lot of research, had flags that were representative of different colonial entities that had, that had presence in Barbados over time. Some of the coral reef, the swimming with turtles, this is a thing. The big festival that they have over here with the traditional dress. And whole, this was actually a whole prison cell that is now, I guess, a tourist attraction that people will go to. And again, the Indigenous people here, she mentioned that the slave trade was part of this history. So I love that she's not afraid to really look at it critically as well. And then she had a friendship, because that is part of what's happening today, Indigenous boats that were dug out of trees that were traditionally used. And again, top 25, you know, great attitude, didn't let this get her down, two years in a row, top 25. And then this year was Portugal. So this is Sylvie's map this year. It's watercolor, which if I, I don't, you know, I'm not an art teacher, but I know watercolor is typically very muted. It's kind of soft around the edges, so the level of detail that she was able to achieve, it really is.
You got her painting watercolor.
It drives right away.
Yeah. So it's vibrant, the level of detail, the crispness. So she had it on here too. Early history prints, Henry the Navigator really kicked off the European exploration that ushered in Christopher Columbus and really, you know, that changed the course of the world's history. Traditional architecture. This is a very famous wave you can find in the Azores. This is a cave that is very well-known. This is a palace again that is very well-known. The Fado music, which is this beautiful, very solemn, mournful music. Like a folk music in Portugal, the Compass Rose, which I always need to make sure they have at least, at least five cartographic elements on their map, associated with Compass Rose, the Portugal flag, and just the level of detail, this to me is amazing.
That wave is actually Nazaret in the coast.
I thought that was a source, when you were just there, right?
Yeah. The biggest waves ever surfed, right?
That's right, just north of Lisbon. They do a hundred-foot wave, you ever seen that in a show?
Oh, cool.
And gee, even have the chicken, which is cool, because that's like in every gift shop.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's our research showed us. And what I thought was really, 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 all of the fish and the, the mussels, the fish, she placed them where you would actually find them in the ocean. So it wasn't just a random placement of, you know, an octopus after you would find that, or the sardines or anchovies, you know, it's all right where you would find these. So I thought that here, the level of detail was really amazing. So she finally won, and we were, I was hoping, I said, Sylvie, your maps are amazing. But what strikes me the most, and I think this is the most important gift I can give to my students, is that she never got frustrated, she persevered, she only just doubled down every year to get this. She had a great attitude, and she was just determined to do this. And she just played this quiet, just focused, just made this happen. I think it's just a great lesson in perseverance and not giving up and not getting knocked down. And if you click here, Sean, where it says magazine view. So there's an online, there's an online portal where you can see the magazine. And then I also have the actual magazines for everybody, so she is on the back of the magazine. For this, we just do the magazine view. Hopefully.
No, if it's us, we're done.
We're charging the internet here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's okay, because it's just a picture of them, so we can move on. Second way to give this to you anyhow. Sean, would you mind going back to the slideshow? And then just wrapping up, so we had a party for her, and we have a family in the middle school with Portuguese roots. So it was really wonderful. The mom of the family went to a market right outside of Boston and bought all of the food. So we had Portuguese sausage and bread and desserts and different kinds of cheeses, these beans, which are amazing, pea beans. And then we also had this party, and we all congratulated Sylvie and celebrated her. And now the next step is Junior Scholastic has actually invited us to do an online meeting with them, where we can meet all of their editors, get a tour of Junior Scholastic's main office, and talk to them about their process, and they can meet Sylvie, so just really cool opportunity.
It's awesome.
Yeah, I think there was one more picture, Sean.
Yeah.
And then that was just on the webpage too. So I just really wanted to acknowledge Sylvie's hard work, and she's really talented. But more importantly, she just didn't give up, and she just showed such incredible perseverance and dedication to being her best self. So I just wanted to let you guys know some of the work our kids are doing.
Thank you.
And-
She got turned into a boss.
She did, and I also actually wanted to acknowledge she's done some classroom, just kind of.
Awesome.
So yeah.
That's great.
I'm actually going to ask her what she would recommend, you know, what she thinks, because I think this is really about her, so to empower her, what she thinks she should use in classroom. And, um, right, ladies, we just want to reach the names.
Yes.
We do, so thank you guys very much. So just-
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you, and also, can we get to eat coffee?
Yes.
I'm gonna give everyone a coffee. And also, that's just a quick aside, we need to be back on Wednesday, so thank you all.
That's great.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Yeah. This is wonderful, thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, moving on to reports by all of us. I'll start by indicating last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and Johanna graciously agreed to provide the school with some extra goodies for the teachers from the board to thank them from us for their hard work. So if you weren't aware of that, we did, we did recognize them. Additionally, I don't know if you've seen, but US News and World Report selected Grangeley High School as the fourth best high school in the state of Maine, based on a number of factors, including our standardized test achievement results, college placement, self-report of students' satisfaction with the preparation they received during high school before their entrance into college, class size, and a number of factors. So we were very proud of that, and I think the town of Grangeley should be very pleased with the fact that we were picked out of all the schools in the state, fourth in the state. So that was terrific. I'll move on then to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mary. So here with me tonight, I do have quite a bit to report out on. On May 4th, on May 30th, sorry, I attended the last Regional Educational Collaborative for Northern, Southern Franklin County. It was the last meeting of the year. We talked about our, you know, the fact that we have been able to align our calendars so that we could sort of share some professional development. So this group is all about sharing resources amongst districts moving forward. We also began discussions on three student-centered programs for the 24-25 school year, involving outdoor education, art programming, and a possible satellite program. In addition to that, with it being our last meeting, we reviewed our committee charter, which outlines the framework for how we function as a group. I really enjoyed working with this group. I enjoy sort of some of the innovative things that they're bringing to the table, and some of the ways that we can sort of bring our kids together and, you know, interact more often, maybe with some of our Stratton and Eustace community. So really, really great group there. I attended the Western Maine Education Collaborative meeting on May the 2nd. This is Western Maine Education Collaborative's 20th anniversary. We talked about our accomplishments over the years, and we outlined a strategic plan for the upcoming year. If you don't know, there are 17 Western Maine schools that are a part of this collaborative, and we are lucky to have this resource and the learning opportunities it provides. One of the things that came out of the meeting was how during the, you know, the COVID times, when we were locked down, that our professional, because of this organization, our professional development continued. So it's, it's a huge asset to have. We're luck, really, really lucky to have this organization. On Friday, May 10th, I attended the Drummond with some annual seminar in Freeport. There were, there was a lot of free legal information provided, a lot of free legal information, like it was crazy. And a great luncheon as well. It was nice to sit and chat with all of the people that we sort of talk to on an ongoing basis. And grants. Our local entitlement grant for special education has been approved. This year, we've been awarded $58,658.57, which is up $3,692.97 over last year. Let's see. The board has asked me to conduct a special education audit, and I have, after a great deal of research, found a consulting firm that we're going to be working with, starting in June. And there'll be more information to come on that, but I'm looking forward to working with this, this consulting agency. The Carrie, who, Carrie and her husband, her husband is Micah, or her name is Carrie. She's a former special education director, has left the profession, but has gone into doing these consulting, you know, requests for a lot of different schools. She comes highly recommended, so looking very much forward to working with her. And as I said, I'll report out on information that we find. I have a special announcement on the 16th of May, and I'm quoting Ms. Thompson here. RLRS will welcome a multi-award-winning Maine author illustrator, Chris Van Dusen. Chris Van Dusen will meet with the students in pre-K in the morning of the 16th. Thanks to a generous donation from the RFA, a copy of one of Mr. Van Dusen's books has been purchased for every student pre-K to buy. Mr. Van Dusen will sign books for students during the day. And this year, students in grades K through participated in Maine's Chickadee Award Read, Mr. Van Dusen's newest book, Big Truck, Little Island, based on a real event on the island of Vinyl Dave. RL, 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 sorry. Look, don't put my words here. Is thrilled to reinvigorate the tradition of inviting a working author illustrator to our school. We are grateful for the support of the community, the RFA, the Janet Wagner Memorial Fund, and the Maine Literacy Fund to make this happen. And the last thing that I'd like to say tonight is Angie, this is Angie Woodworth's last meeting with us. She's a senior, she's graduating this year. Angie, I'd just like to say that it's been a pleasure having you serve as a student representative. You've done a very good job, and my understanding is that you are accepted to the school of your choice. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you want to tell us where that is?
It's in Albany, it's Albany College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, and I am going into the microbiology program.
Congratulations. And good luck, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Moving on down that step.
I'm gonna let the students go first, so they can fill in all the blanks for it. Yeah, so we don't double share.
Okay. Last week, we had the AP finals, nine students participated. We had APR portfolios, which are actually on display both on that report board right there and also throughout the hallway. And we had the AP US History exam and the AP Seminar exam. Each student that participated spent the entire 2023-2024 school year preparing for these exams. And next week is the Senior Trip, which is going to be May 24th to the 27th, and we're going to Boston. May 30th, the middle school and high school chorus is going to travel to Springfield, Massachusetts to participate in the New England Six Flags Competition, and we will return June 1st, which is prom. And the baccalaureate will be held on June 2nd. The foster tech recognition ceremony will be on June 3rd. Class day is June 6th, graduation is June 8th. And I want to say thank you all for welcoming me onto your board two years ago. I have, it's been an honor to be able to represent my peers. Thank you. Carrie, off to her, prom is June 1st, and we've been talking to Delaney and scheduling the 2024-2025 school year. We had the NHS Student Club Ceremony, it was at the theater, and Angie was one of the new individuals below. The college fair, we're having a college fair on Thursday in Augusta. A couple of kids are going, it's just gonna be a bunch of colleges that we can talk to, I think. And more testing, we took our NUIAs. The juniors are taking the state science test next week. Kids took their SAT tests. And kids who were taking college classes in the second semester have, I think, all finished their finals, if not very soon. And I think that's it.
Yeah, so just briefly touch, the assessment window opened the end of April, and just see the amount, it seems like this year more than other years, it's a lot. Sean's been working closely. The only, so we did SAT, AP US History, APR, state reading, state math. Everyone else does reading, math, just for district data, that's not in grades 3 through 8 and 10. And we did language. And then 5, 8, and 11 have to do the state science assessment. It is, it's a, it's a huge disruption. You need the quality data, but the amount of time this year. And the thing is, the only paper and pencil was the AP Seminar. Everything else has been on computers. So the SAT was our first time using Blue Book to do the SATs. That's a huge stress, like before, when I gave the SAT, I had to like, the most complicated part was like boxing it, and that's quite complex, if you've read the instructions, it's a lot. So we did that, which is a big deal. And the most stressful one was these kids that worked for the entire year for their AP US History. On this Friday at 8:00 AM, we're completely relying on technology and the internet to all work right for them to take this assessment. That's all gone well. We've had a few snafus with just NUIA stuff not loading right. We had to suspend a couple sessions. We learned something about the state science assessment. Our kids logged in, we stopped it, and didn't realize that it submitted for everybody without taking it. So I made a call this morning, we're doing it again tomorrow, that's fine. But it's a lot of moving parts, you know, it takes a lot of time. And this year seemed more so than ever. I think it has to do with the tech, because it adds a layer of complexity to it and stress. If it doesn't go well, you can't just like erase an answer or like switch the piece of paper. We suspended the session, but that's a lot of work. And the kids like, what, you gotta really, so a junior that took AP, took the SAT on April 24th, maybe AP push on the AP Seminar on another day, it has to take the state science assessment and NUIAs. So it's a lot, all in Maine, pretty much. So that's going well though.
Yeah.
We're, we're charging through, Sean's a big part of that. Um, sports, middle school teams, we are having a blast. We've played four games, and the girls are working hard, our boys, we beat Mount Blue yesterday. We're playing ball, the kids are doing well. Sean and I worked, you know, same group we've had for like three years. We are having a lot of fun. They're, they're playing well when they have to. We had a home run yesterday. Like, that was a pretty big deal, it came off the bat, and I was like, wow.
Yeah, where'd that come from?
So that's been a lot of fun. We have a home game hopefully against Quebec on Thursday. And then we have a makeup game Monday, then it's kind of a long break because Quebec's happening. But yeah, I think that baseball program, softball program, we all had kids, we're building with an eye on the future. Some good high school stuff, I think, from this group, so yeah. Tomorrow night, we've sent out two announcements, we have a child safety night. Ryan Close from the Franklin County Sheriff's Department approached us, with Leanna from Health Community Coalition, they're gonna come here, it's from 5:30 to 7:00. Food's provided, we're gonna have healthcare in the gym. And Ryan worked before a lot with like online safety and those sorts of cases. So really what it's about is just helping parents understand our current state of child safety and a big focus on who you provide access to your child through, both digitally and physically. And I think the big piece is that digital world of, I don't think parents realize how much access they give other people to their child on the cellphone. And Ryan's gonna talk about that, and then things you can do to protect your child with devices, and then also the physical piece, it's his thing, Health Community Coalition. They did it in Stratton, it was well-received, and they've done it at a couple other schools. I think it's just an opportunity to ask questions, because I know it's a big wonder for parents. We sent out a Google form, not many people said they were coming. I hope more people show up, because it is valuable, especially that, that digital piece, especially for kids in middle school and high school. that, that digital piece, especially for kids in middle school and high school, about the potential risk there, and what you can do to kind of mitigate that. On the 30th, we have the planter terrim coming, he's gonna do a presentation for each grade span, absolutely cool, he sets up the inflatable plant terrim in the gym, that was a lot of fun last year, the greenhouse is coming along, if you've seen it, it's looking really good, and so I don't know how much more time, but Pete Christensen has put a lot of hours in out there, and Nene's been out there, and gosh, Abby's dad.
Don Thompson.
Don Thompson helped in the beginning, so that's going really well, so we're excited about that, but I think that's all I have. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, starting with policy campaign. Well, we cannot have a policy meeting in May, obviously ready, and so we just decided not to have one, but the next policy will be June 3rd, first Monday, and June 3 o'clock. Thank you, Gary. Moving on to framing, Chris.
Nothing really to cover, other than budget's on track, and final statement review on yet, budget's happened in July, and Georgia's working on the audit, and I think we're in good shape, other districts are seeing double-digit costs, if not more, and, you know, follow the Kingfield social media once in a while too, there's quite a number over there about them trying to figure out their challenges, so I think we're pretty, we're in pretty good shape. That's about it.
Thank you, Chris. Danielle, that's facilities committee.
Okay, so the kitchen update, the dishwasher, and the oven, we originally got a bid from Pintree, but they are no longer going to be selling, they are only servicing, so we have Cisco coming tomorrow, and we're getting another bid from Peprar, because we are now also getting another three-door fridge for food storage, and a new milk fridge, because ours is still empty, and then we are also going to stick with the high temp dishwasher, that's what was recommended to us. The fuel tank, it started Monday, they took the old tank out, we only cooled screen, and they removed most of the fuel, we were able to take it all, except for like 143 gallons or something, that was not good, and then Siemens is back next week, and the new tank should be arriving tonight, and then it should be all done hopefully next week, and then for a few summer projects, we have with some of the halls, replaced the ground bathrooms, redo some of the softball field, and we did have some of the sprinkler tests done, too, and this was all good. And then we did talk about the COPS grants, and we are going to have some added cameras done, and some two-door increase.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Okay, negotiations, Bob.
We don't have too much to report on, we are keeping an eye on LD 955, which passed the House, but has yet to go through the Senate, and we will see what happens with that, and depending on those outcomes, we will get our committee back together and huddle and probably generate some financial models and projections to see how some of these outcomes might affect our budget moving ahead.
Thank you, Bob, I appreciate that. Okay, moving on to appointments, resignations, nominations, and transfers, Georgia.
Okay, so I have one resignation, Reed Stevens, our fifth grade teacher, is sadly leaving us, you would like for me to read this to you, it says, "With mixed emotions, I write to inform you of my decision to resign as the fifth grade teacher at Rangeley Lakes Regional School effective at the end of the 23-24 school year. This decision has not been an easy one, as my time at Rangeley has been incredibly rewarding and fulfilling. The sense of community and support within the school has made my experience truly exceptional. I have cherished every moment spent in the classroom, witnessing the growth and development of my students, both academically and personally. I am grateful for the opportunities I've been given to contribute to the educational journey of our students. This experience has enriched my own professional growth and reinforced my passion for education. I am grateful to you, the administrative team, my colleagues, and most importantly, students and their families, for your unwavering support and camaraderie through my time at Rangeley. Your dedication to creating a positive learning environment has made a lasting impact on me, I am truly grateful for the friendships and the memories we have shared. Thank you once again for the opportunity to be a part of working for Rangeley community. I will always look back on my time here with fondness and appreciation." I have two nominations tonight, the first nomination is for our middle school English Language position, she is actually with us on Zoom, her name is Kelly Price, and I'm gonna have Mr. Liberty speak to this.
Yeah, hello Kelly, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, 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 so yeah, we, we interviewed Kelly, and we're very excited, very quickly, she has ties here, they've been patienting here for 35 years, and enjoy Rangeley, and you know in her letter, that desire to kind of be here, which you really can get excited to see when you see an application package, so she's been an English teacher for 21 years, she's had roles where she was just an English teacher, and also an ELA curriculum specialist and a literacy coach, you know, what really, she has a lot of experience, but what I gathered from the interview is a very young at heart educator, and right now, she's one of one of 15 educators on the English department, and just that level of excitement to try something new, you know, it's a big change for her, and she talked about her career, has been at a couple of different, couple of different situater, like size schools, different schools, and is really excited to keep growing and learning in another area, so we were really excited when we met her. She was a semifinalist for Connecticut Teacher of the Year in '21, '22, and yeah, I couldn't wait to have that Google meet and invite her to be part of the team, she brings, we felt a lot of excitement, Kelsey was part of the interview, yeah, and you know, we really think about team when we interview people, we look for a quality educator, but also, how are they gonna fit with the teams we build, you know, we had a really, our middle school team was really in a good place, Kelsey's taken a little break, we had an unexpected Simone moving on, so I was like, oof, what are we gonna do, I had a solid team, I think we've made some good decisions, I have another one coming in a minute, yeah, we're really excited about Kelly, and I think she's gonna be a really, really good fit, yeah, and she was really excited when we told her.
Okay, I have another nomination, and she's actually sitting with us tonight, and this is for the interim social studies position for next year, and that is our very own Beth Carroll. I'm also gonna have Mr. Liberty speak to that, and you'll have to nominate, because I'll have to take action on both of those.
Yes, so Beth has been with us for two years, it's her second year with us, she works in special education, and she's just a high-quality person and educator, she does a great job with our students, like, you know, she works with some kids that can take a little work to get them to do some work and need some additional support, and she knows how to work with those kiddos, she develops good relationships, she works hard, she's persistent, at first, she told some stories about how first, they may, she may be a little too persistent, and they're like, no, we don't need it, but all of a sudden they come around, they come look for Beth to help them, and I'm really, you know, she fills an ed tech three role right now, right, in special ed, and when you can grow and develop from within with quality employees, that's important, and I think this is a really good step for Beth, we're excited, and yeah, she's gonna be our one-year social studies teacher, and I think that team fit, we had a little bit of a breakup from it, and then we, I think this team is like gonna be really, really good, with Kelly coming on and Beth coming on, and yeah, I'm excited about what we have, yeah.
So I need a nomination, or a motion, excuse me, to nominate these two individuals. First of all, Kelly Price to the, to the middle school English position, and I'll start with that. Second? Oh, any questions? All those in favor? And then I need a motion for the social studies, interim social studies position, Beth? Beth Carroll, Carroll, sorry, Beth.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob, a second? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
I just have
Yes.
One question. With that move, what are your anticipations, are there any gaps that might be left where Beth was previously serving?
We'll just hire, advertise and hire people. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, she, I think this is the right move for our current staffing, and we'll advertise that.
Okay, I also have So wait, wait, sorry, sorry, so can I have a vote on that motion, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, unanimous.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Yes, congratulations.
It'll be awesome, Beth. All right, and then the last, the last one I have to announce, we have a probation, a probationary teacher that's moving into a continuing teacher, and that is Pete St. John.
Yeah, Pete, Pete has served us for two years, I think he, again, we have a strong high school team, he brought a really, after, you know, feeling, after Straub leaves, that's a big gap, yeah, and I think he's doing well, I will
I can't believe he's been two years.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, with our, some of our assessment data, vocabulary was kind of a, not, I mean, not a critical point, but it was just a little lower, he does weekly vocab quizzes and tests, and I've seen, I've sat in on some of the dictionary stuff he does, and our NUIAs course showed a growth in vocabulary from Pete, so yeah, he's a good fit for the team, he's done a good job, and we're gonna welcome him to continue.
Thank you very much, all right. Moving on then to action items, I have one action item, I need a motion to change the date on the 24-25 school year calendar to indicate that graduation will be occurring on June the 7th, not June 14th. So can I have a second? Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Okay, I need one last motion, and that, that is to adjourn this evening. Everybody's hands goes up, not a problem with this one, the second, yeah, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Our next meeting is in 12:00.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you so much.